Welcome to the September 18th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Pastor Ray doing the invocation.
Bow your hearts with me. Heavenly Father, as we lift up our mayor and this city council tonight, I thank you that we have the privilege of serving our city, our community, our county, our state, our nation. I pray, Father, that as we discuss agendas and craft policies for this city, we will always put people's interests above our own. Remind us, Father, that we are in this position not to be served, but to serve the public, just as Christ came not to be served, but to serve and ultimately die on a cross to save us. I also pray, Father, that we will uphold what is moral, good, rational. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ray. Incidentally, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Lampy?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne?
Present.
Councilmember Gordon?
Present.
Councilmember Brockert?
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Conard?
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have two proclamations. And Justice, are you okay if I just read both of them and then, or would you want me to do one at a time?
Do both.
Do both? Okay. So you don't want two speeches? Okay, all right. No, it's glad to see you guys. All right. First one is National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. Whereas the movement known as Orange Shirt Day, also known as the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, was started by Phyllis Webster of the Sasquecom Exquitum First Nation, whereas Phyllis, like Indigenous children throughout the United States, attended an Indian residential school whose purpose it was to strip her of her language and culture. Many children in these boarding schools were subjected to range of sexual, physical, spiritual, and emotional abuse, and many lost their lives. And whereas Native children were not allowed to speak their native language, wear their traditional clothing, or practice their cultural tradition, and were forced to have their haircut by school officials. And whereas Iowa was home to several Indian boarding schools who proposed it was to foreseeable assimilate Native children. It is acknowledging the legacy of legalized injustice and brutality toward Native children and their families. And whereas we must do more than just remember the children who lives were taken, the countless families torn apart, and the communities ravaged of these cruel government sanctioned practices. We must acknowledge the generational trauma that exists and continues to impact Native people and their communities. And whereas after years of avoiding color orange, avoiding the color orange, which the Indian boarding school forbid her to wear, Phyllis created Orange Shirt Day to remember the children who lost their lives at the hands of boarding school system and to honor the survivors. Now therefore, I, Brad Bark, Mayor Muscatine, do hereby proclaim September 30th of 2025 as Orange Shirt Day in Muscatine. And the next one is Proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the land known as the State of Iowa and our city, Muscatine, Iowa, named its recognition of the Iowa tribe, as well as the language used to identify many of our lakes, rivers, cities, counties, schools, buildings, and considerably more, reflects the inherent print of Indigenous peoples. This land has been home to Indigenous peoples since time immemorable, and without whom the building of this state and city would not have been possible. Whereas Indigenous peoples have made essential contributions to the landscape of Iowa, including traditional knowledge, experience, labor, technology, science, philosophy, industry, arts, as well as their cultural belief system that stipulates Indigenous peoples as protectors and stewards of our natural environment for the benefit of all. Whereas the city of Muscatine is dedicated to eliminate racism towards Indigenous peoples and seeks to promote practices that honor the state's indigenous roots, history, and contributions, and reflect the experiences of Indigenous peoples to ensure greater access and opportunity. And whereas the city of Muscatine joins a growing number of cities that have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, creating an opportunity to promote appreciation, understanding, friendship, and partnerships among Indigenous peoples and all the Muscatine residents. And whereas the city of Muscatine will observe Indigenous Peoples' Day as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the history, culture, and contributions of Indigenous peoples in our community. Now therefore, I, Brad Bark, Mayor Muscatine, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 13th of 2025 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And tonight, we have Justice. Is there anyone else you'd like to have come up? The whole team?
We're all gonna come up.
Perfect. Come on up. Right over here, Kevin.
Gue, Upjelasi, hello and welcome. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you all. My name is Justice. I'm the co-creator of the Indigenous Coalition of Muscatine and from the Spaganagadi First Nations Reservation. As a Mi'kmaq woman and a generational survivor of the residential schools, I accept these two proclamations for National Day of Truth and Reconciliation and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Accepting the Indigenous Day proclamation is a reminder of the enduring spirit and contributions of Indigenous people. May this day deepen our commitment to honoring Indigenous cultures and histories and inspire ongoing respect and partnership in our community. We hope National Day of Truth and Reconciliation will help educate our community on the atrocities and the abuse that occurred at the residential schools. We want to create a safe space for knowledge and healing. The residential schools, also known as the Indian boarding schools, began operation in the 1800s and ran through the 1990s across the United States and Canada. There were over 523 recognized boarding schools in the United States, and three of them were here in Iowa. The purpose of these institutions was to forcibly remove Indigenous children from their homes, language, families, and assimilate them into modern society. An attempt to kill the Indian and save the man, Indigenous people were forced to endure not only physical, mental, and sexual abuse, but also death. Many children did not survive and were found in mass unmarked graves. This proclamation not only acknowledges the survivor, it also mourns the innocent. It is a call for a reminder to listen and to learn. It is a call for action from all of us to confront the truths of our shared history and commend ourselves to ongoing work of reconciliation. Accepting this proclamation is not only just a symbolic gesture, it is a commitment to meaningful change. It is a promise to listen to Indigenous voices, support healing and justice, and to rebuild relations rooted in respect and understanding. Let us move forward together guided by the principles of truth, respect, and reconciliation. Let us honor the past, celebrate the present, and work towards a future where all peoples are valued, heard, and empowered. I want to thank our board of directors, our community members, friends, and family who have continued to support our vision and mission as the Indigenous Coalition of Muscatine. Walalio, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item is a request to approve the appointments of Tony... I'm sorry?
Lechi.
Tony Lechi? To the Public Art Advisory Commission and Mark Fortenbacher to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second Osborne.
A second by Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Request is approved with all ayes. Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second Conard.
A second by Conard. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries with all ayes. Next is communications. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Come on up. Yep, so, name, address, and we're gonna give you three minutes. Good to see you, by the way.
Oh, good to see you too, Mayor. Tim Nelson, 2435 Longhurst Court, Muscatine. My wife and I, well, she owns a business. I'm a volunteer at Good Karma Creations Downtown. I'm here to support a plan by Mr. Osborne regarding updating the parking meter situation. And one thing, I want to bring this, something happened today that I want to bring to your attention. So that spot in front of our store, it's a two-hour spot. There was a car with Scott County plates that was parked there for up four hours. They didn't know. They didn't, and a lot of people see the meters, oh, there's no meter over there, we'll park there. And I, you know, I just, I think going forward, there could be better signage or something. Some curb markings or some things that I've seen in other towns. So, anyway, I just wanted to, nothing of emergency, but I just wanted to come here and support Jeff's. He's got some really good ideas going forward, and I believe it. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else I'd like to share an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Council, is there any follow-up to Mr. Nelson's communications?
I'm taking a tick. In October, in-depth meeting, I'll be on the agenda to speak about it again, the follow-up conversation I had started in June of last year. Ahead of that, I'll be meeting with council members in pairs and discussing the ideas ahead of the time. Instead of learning from my mistakes last time was a bit of a surprise for everybody. Lot of information last time.
Any other follow-up, council members? All right. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items 11A, B1 through 5, items 12A through C, and item 14A with bills totaling $2,974,206?
So moved Lampy.
We have motion by Councilmember Lampy?
Second Gordon.
A second by Gordon. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries with all ayes. All right, we're at 17A. Is a request to waive third reading and adopt on second and final reading of an ordinance to vacate, indeed, the undeveloped right-of-way adjoining 716 and 720 Clymer Street, which are lots 26 and 27 of Sunset Edition. Is there a motion to waive the third reading and adopt this ordinance on second and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second.
And a second by Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Hearing none. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Second and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is B is request to waive third reading and to adopt on second and final reading of an ordinance to vacate, indeed, the undeveloped right-of-way adjoining the property located at 1315 Smalley. Is there a motion to waive the third reading and adopt this ordinance on second and final reading and to direct it for its publication as required by law?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second Osborne.
And a second by Osborne. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Hearing none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Second and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is C is resolution setting a public hearing on October 7th of 2025 for review of the plans and specifications for the Muscatine Marina Confined Disposal Facility. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second Lampy.
A second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with the public or council as it relates to setting a public hearing? Hearing none. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is D is a resolution authorizing special assessments for unpaid abatement service fees and rental housing fees to private properties. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second Conard.
And a second by Conard. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Hearing none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is E is a resolution approving the extension of an industrial contract for the Muscatine Transfer Station slash landfill. This is the Kraftheinz Food Company. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne?
Second.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is F is a resolution accepting completed work on the upgrades to the Clark House elevators and authorizing final payment. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
I just think it's great to have this done. I know when this first came up about elevators, half of them used being workable, the other half, especially for safety issues regarding people in the event that they need to get down from the higher floors. So I'm just glad to see that this is now done and hopefully the residents at Clark House can go up and down using the elevator without issues. So, thank you, Jody.
Councilmember Gordon?
I was gonna pretty much say the same thing. Thanks, Angie. No, perfect. Thank you, Jody.
Oh, thanks, Melissa, sorry.
Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thanks to the team.
That's right.
Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is G is request to approve declaration of items as surplus and authorized sale of items at public surplus auction. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second Osborne.
And a second by Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is H is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to McQueen in the amount of $42,358.49 for the purchase of battery-operated extrication tools for Muscatine Fire Department. Chief, did I do an okay job with that? Okay. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second Conard.
A second by Conard. Is there any discussion with council? Councilmember Gordon?
Can Chief Hartman come up and just describe the equipment so people understand what the purchase is?
Absolutely. So extrication equipment, these are tools that we use typically in car accidents. We had one here this last week that we pulled the tools out and used. The tools we have right now are getting pretty old. Technology is changing, all those kind of things. And, you know, these tools are going to kind of replace our oldest set. It is a set of tools. One is a 28-inch spreader, which is a device that we put into a crack, and we can spread it, and it'll spread 28 inches. Another one is an 8-inch cutter, so it's kind of like scissors, and it will open 8 inches, and we use that to cut the steel on the cars. And then the last big piece is what we call a spreader, and it's a 60-inch spreader. So once we take it, we spread it open so far, then we can take this other device and we put it in that space, and we can spread it a lot further so we can get larger people out of the vehicles.
So Chief, are these replacements? Are you gonna get rid of the others in surplus, or maybe?
Right. The oldest set, quite honestly, I don't think we'll get much for them in surplus, so we'll probably end up putting them on our reserve engine. So we'll have kind of a backup.
I didn't know if some of the volunteer engines around the county could use them too, but...
Yeah, most of the volunteer agencies around us already have tools and have newer tools. Our oldest set is actually hydraulic, so it utilizes a gas engine to create the hydraulics. It's wires or lines, all that kind of stuff, all over the place. Anymore, almost everything is battery. So I think everybody around us is to the point where they're using batteries by now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Lewis?
I was just gonna say, anything that gets the victim out of the car vehicle quicker so we can get them the help they need, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Alright, thanks.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is I is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to MTI Distributing in the amount of $61,153.52 for a multi-purpose tractor, mower, snow blower for the soccer complex and the Musco Sports Center. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert?
Second Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council while Nick Gao is in the room? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is J is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Turf Works in the amount of $32,000 for a 2019 JD 2020 sprayer for the soccer complex. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Osborne.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne?
Second Conard.
Second by Conard. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is K is request approval of change order number one for the SLU Lift Station Improvement Project. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Request is approved with all ayes. Last item is a request to install a semi-permanent stop sign in Island at the intersection of Mulberry Avenue and Tipton Road. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council?
Mayor, you know, on this, we're on the Mulberry stop sign. So again, my encouragement to the city staff is, as you look at that intersection, I mean, that's an intersection that carries a lot of emergency vehicles in and out of that and stuff, so let's make sure that as we move forward with a correction on this, that we take in mind the school buses that use it, the emergency vehicles that use it, where they stop and stuff, even to the point of, is it time that we actually move that stop sign up and move the crosswalk and everything else in there? So I know that may be a little more expensive and a little more involved, but if we're gonna fix it, let's go ahead and fix it and do it right so that we can get it done. I understand why we moved it back because it's a shorter crosswalk, but if we're gonna do this, if you stop where the stop sign actually is now, you can't see anything and stuff in there. So if we're gonna do it, let's make sure we do it and do it to, you know, the way it should be and not, you know, just kind of put a Band-Aid on it.
And basically, you can't see it because there's vegetation to your right, correct?
Yeah, your vegetation is to the right, and you are so far back at that first stop when you actually stopped the stop sign. I think everybody that drives the city has gone through that intersection. So if we're gonna do it, let's make sure we, you know, really move it around and talk about what should be the long-term solution.
Councilmember Lewis?
I just have a question regarding, this is, I realize, a semi-permanent solution to a issue. So my question would be is, how long do we consider this semi-permanent? Are we talking spring of next year that we'll make a decision on exactly what we're gonna do? Is this just a, let's try this and see if it works for now?
Good evening. The semi-permanent means it's not permanently installed into the pavement, so it's, we can move it. I don't think we set a timeline. I don't think that we really agreed on that. We can probably do whatever. What will happen is the island, so to speak, will not be raised at this point. It'll be made out of the delineators, so they'll be bolted to the ground. The pole will be in a barrel, and so it can be moved if we need to as well. So we're just gonna, like Councilmember Lampy said, that's our goal, is to get this in, evaluate how it works, and then we can make changes going forward. If we ever do anything permanent, we'll definitely come back, get your approval for that, and then we'll go from there. So test run, basically, is what this is. I can see this going probably at least through winter, just so we can have some time to get some data, and we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Request is approved with all ayes. Councilmember Gendrich, does anything you'd like to share?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Brockert?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Conard?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Lewis?
I have several things tonight I'd like to say.